Call the meeting to order. Start with the prayer. Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making policy of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. We may continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which for the good of the city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public. For which stands one nation.
A nation under God, indivisible, liberty, just as for all.
We'll do a roll call. We have three councilors participating by Zoom. Roll call.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Chau.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
In the chamber.
Nine present.
Counselor Mercier. Memorials.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and duck in chamber for Martha Joan Barrett, E.S., Esquire, loving daughter, sister, advocate, attorney, friend, who died at the young age of forty-three. Martha was the daughter of Joan Gorman Barrett and the late Richard Barrett, both of Lowell. Although she was born in Boston, she grew up in Lowell and graduated in nineteen ninety-five from the Academy of Notre Dame and from St. Anselm College with a BA in Classics in nineteen ninety-nine. After college, Martha attended law school in Boston and graduated from New England School of Law in two thousand and two. Shortly after graduating from law school, Martha opened up a private practice in Lowell. She focused on criminal defense and family law. She truly loved being an attorney and working in the city she lived in and loved. For many years, Martha bartended at her brother's pub, Lowell's Kill Kenny Pub. She was a member of the Immaculate Conception Church. Beside her mother Joan, she is survived by her brothers, Richard and Daniel, both of Lowell, her sisters Catherine of San Francisco and her sister Mary Margaret Barrett and her brother-in-law Stephen Nunman of Lowell. We offer our condolences to her family, relatives, and many family friends. She will be truly missed. I know there are councilors that want to speak as well, but if I could just end by saying, I'd also like to offer a moment of silence and duck in chamber for all those who have died since our last council meeting. They all will be truly missed. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Counselor Mercier for doing that for Martha. You know, Martha, she was a tremendous attorney, worked with her at the Lowell District Court over the past seven or eight years, but she was a better person. You know, she always looked out for her clients, number one, and she always was very thorough in everything that she did. You know, I wasn't able to make the services this weekend, and I apologize to Mrs. Barrett and to Dickie along with her other siblings for that, but please know that she was a beloved member at Lowell District Court. Everybody loved her, they respected her, and it really is a tremendous loss for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to speak about the recent passing of Attorney Martha Barrett. She was a very special person and loved by many, and you certainly saw that if you attended the funeral mass at the Immaculate Conception. She was a member of a family that has been involved with numerous charities and projects within the Lowell community throughout the years. And my next-door neighbors, Martha's sister Mary and her husband Steve Nunman, I wish them and their entire family strength as they deal with the passing of Martha, who was taken too soon. May her soul rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else? Dim the lights. Moment of silence. Next, under Mayor's business, we have communication, remote, and Zoom participation. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Chau, second by Counselor Elliott. Two-two, we have recognition of specialty materials. I think we have Christine McCall here. She's going to introduce that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the City Council and Mayor Donahue, I'm very excited to introduce Monica Rommel, the CEO of Specialty Materials, and Rick Rommel, the Chief Business Officer. They both co-own the business out on Middlesex Street. Specialty Materials is a woman-owned business and the world's leading manufacturer of boron and silicon carbide fibers used in aerospace and sporting goods. Specialty Materials was recently awarded Subcontractor of the Year by the Small Business Administration honoring their work in federal contracting. We were very, a group of us were very fortunate to tour the campus along with Counselor Mercier and Manager Donahue a few weeks ago to celebrate the award. It was quite the operation, and we were all really impressed by the work that they do, but what was also equally impressive is the number of longstanding Lowell employees that they have. We've met a lot of their workers that have been there for over forty years. Counselor Mercier did provide Specialty Materials a citation on behalf of the City Council in honor of their award, but I was, and we invited them, the mayor invited them today, so we could introduce them to all of you and welcome them to Lowell and say congratulations again. And so I'm pleased to introduce Monica and Rick Rommel of Specialty Materials.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for allowing us to attend your meeting. We are native West Coast people and have moved to the East Coast, and we have found a lot to like about Lowell. We're very fortunate to be able to manage and operate this business that basically continues Lowell's longstanding legacy in the textile industry. We're just a little bit higher tech, and we're really excited to be part of the community and grow the company so we can get more Lowell residents high-technology jobs. Rick?
I think that's well said. I'll just add to the, you know, since we are near the Massachusetts, I think it was a little surprising to the community that were on the tour that we had made the move. We've been through the West Coast, the Midwest, most recently Minneapolis, and now recently in the Lowell area, so we're excited to be here.
And we want to keep bringing back manufacturing to the United States, specifically the East Coast.
That's true.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Next, we have two-three, recognition. October is the National Domestic Abuse Awareness Month. October is National Domestic Abuse Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which began in nineteen eighty-one by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence as a day of unity to connect battered women advocates across the country. Domestic violence affects millions, both women and men of every race, religion, culture, and status. It's not just punches and black eyes, it's yelling, humiliation, stalking, manipulation, coercion, threats, and isolation. Since the Violence Against Women Act passed in nineteen eighty-four, we've come a long way because, we've come a long way. Between nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and ten and twenty-ten, the overall rate of domestic violence has dropped nearly two-thirds. The state laws have reformed to address the issues such as dating abuse in the workplace, stalking, unemployment, discrimination, and more. So every October, we rededicate ourselves to breaking the cycle. Counselor Noon, did you have a comment?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting this on. So it's, as you said, it's very important that we take a stand on domestic violence awareness in this city, in or any other city for that matter, bringing attention to this issue of domestic violence this month and throughout the year. By taking a stand, we remind everyone that there are still countless victim survivors, their families, and community impact from this domestic violence. You heard it last meeting that we went to, the Highland. Nine cases of accurate assault resulted from domestic violence, and this city has, through CDBG money, grant, give grant to the Asian Task Force to advocate and to make sure that this is getting out there, and this is that the impact is well alive, and that we have to do it together to stop this domestic violence and to raise this awareness this month and throughout the year is important. And I'm glad you, Mr. Mayor, put this on for tonight as a recognition of this month, Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Yes, and thank you for, again, bringing it up to our attention, and thank you to all the nonprofits throughout the city that do deal with this day in and day out. I have one that didn't make the agenda, so I need a motion to suspend the rules to bring in by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Noon. We just have one more. I'd like to introduce one of Lowell's newest businesses, Malice Nail Boutique at seven-hundred Chelmsford Street. The salon owner is Lakia Keev, and she's here with us tonight to say a few words. She's not coming up yet, though. Oh. But should her picture be bigger up there? Is there a way to unmute Lakina?
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. Good evening, City Council and everyone. My name is Lakina Keev. I would like to thank Mayor John Leahy and City Manager Donahue, and all the City Council for having me to speak tonight, reading about my new shop, Malice Nail Boutique on seven-hundred Chelmsford Street. Thank you for, Sir Kavichow, for supporting to, in helping to arrange for my store such a full grand opening two weeks ago. I have been in nail salon business over fourteen years with my own shop in the Duquen Mas, but Lowell holds very special place in my heart. This is my home where I raised my two kids and where I want to do business. I jumped at opportunity to purchase this Chelmsford Street building. I spent over two hundred fifty thousand to complete runway, the salon, with the state of add nail technologies. At Malice Nail Boutique, we always stress hygiene and cleanliness. Every nail tool and utensil is completely clean and spilt wide after one use. With our other players in dentist's office and hospital, our nail polish is completely non-toxic and set up jewelry light without jewelry light. We avoid aggressive service due to smell and chemical, then give up. At Malice Boutique, we go to extra mile to deliver a high level of technical expertise, impeccable guest services. Our staff, we will train really to serve you all way with friendly smiles. Again, thank you for having me, and please check it out, Facebook, at Malice Nail Boutique. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And we had a, we had a great grand opening. Counselor Rourke was, Counselor Rourke, Counselor Mercier was there as well as a few of the other councilors, and nice, clean place, seven-hundred Chelmsford Street, so anybody listening, if you can check them out, go over there, it's a great place. So, thank you. I need a motion to accept and place on file two-two, two-three, and two-four by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Elliott. City clerk business. Need a motion to accept and place on file minutes of the Finance Subcommittee on the twenty, September twenty-second, City Council meeting September twenty-second, Finance Subcommittee jointly with the School Committee, Finance Subcommittee on the twenty-ninth. So I need a motion by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Rourke, place on file. Motion responses. Motion response A, any questions on that? Counselor Noon, Counselor Samaras.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, thanks, Madam Manager Diane Trad and her team for the report. Question I have is just pertaining to the parking garage. Is that scheduled to be completed this, next month? Or this month, I mean?
Thank you. I believe Diane Trad is on. It's currently scheduled for November, to be finished in November. It had, we had hoped that it would be October, but there were a couple of delays, so November is the expected time.
Thank you. The other question I have with regard to the Lord Overpass project, so how has the traffic there been? Do we hear any complaint from, you know, resident about traffic, you know, to, you know?
Thank you, Counselor. You know, surprisingly, our office has not gotten many complaints about the traffic. I think they've done a pretty good job of switching the lanes, but maintaining, you know, two open lanes in both directions. The fill is almost complete, and so over the next, you know, year and a half, you're going to see those lanes move and change. The bridges will be the next thing that comes down, but, you know, a big transformation. But considering the extent of the project, we haven't had that many complaints in terms of impeding the traffic. Now, these past few months, the traffic hasn't been as bad either, so maybe that's, you know, part luck.
Thank you for the report.
Counselor Samaras, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this report, Madam Manager. One of the things, the Signature Bridge will be finished, and that's going to do a lot to bring the project, all the projects together. Sorry about that. Bring everything together. Couple of questions. Could you just quickly give a rundown of wind development so people can understand what's going on there? And when Counselor Noon asked about the Dutton Street project, the overpass, I know we're going to get a report in the Transportation Subcommittee, but with the good weather and with, I would say, less traffic in the past, are we ahead of the game? Has this allowed us to have, is, where's, what's the status of this project regarding timeline? Thank you.
Madam Manager.
Thank you. And as I said, I think I see Diane and Joe Genowitz on as well, but let me just say the, you're correct, Counselor, this has been referred to the Transportation Subcommittee, so I know there'll be a full report at the Transportation Subcommittee. The, in terms of the timing of the project, we, I think we have been a little bit ahead, not remarkably, but we've benefited from good weather, not much traffic, and been able to push forward with the project. And I'll let Joe or Diane chime in as far as the exact timeline that we're on. Just quickly on the wind development project, parcels eight and nine, that is, again, the project which was the first private development project. It's going to have one hundred and twenty-five housing units and five thousand square feet of commercial space. It's, that project broke ground in mid-March of this year, and it's a two-year construction period, so we anticipate that to be completed in March of two thousand and twenty-two. Mixed use, mixed housing in terms of, it's from market rate to affordable, so there is a mix of housing there, and the project is underway. Diane or Joe, if you want to speak to the timeline on the Lord Overpass project?
Thank you, Madam Manager. So for the Lord Overpass, they're going to be moving from stage two to stage three right around Thanksgiving, and at that stage, you'll start to see demolition of the bridges that are over there now, as well as the, working on the construction of, really starting to form that four-way intersection between Jackson Street, Thorndike, Fletcher. So you'll see a lot of activity going on there as they set up some, again, another interim traffic pattern, but still two lanes open in each direction, whether you're going across Middlesex, whether you're going up Thorndike Street. So it'll be an exciting phase to move from stage two to stage three, and as the manager alluded to, we are staying on schedule.
Thank you, no, thank you for that report. Actually, I would say that, you know, some of these projects, especially like that, would be behind schedule, so I'd say the good weather in a sense may not have allowed us to go way ahead of schedule, but to be on schedule, I think, is just as positive. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott.
How many, I'm afraid to ask this question, how many stages are there for the Lord Overpass if we're on number three?
Joe, if you can answer that, the number of stages in the Lord Overpass?
There are five stages total.
Five. I know it was a thirty, thirty-month or thirty-six-month build-out. Is that, is that still projected and?
Yes, that's still the.
How far, how far through, I guess I lose time, how far into the project are we? Midway?
Yeah, so we broke ground in mid-March, as the manager alluded to, so spring two thousand and twenty-three is when the project wrapped up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have city-owned property, motion response B, Counselor Noon, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks again, Madam Manager and Diane Trad and her team for a very comprehensive report. I would like very much, though, if we can, you know, send this to the Subcommittee, Housing Subcommittee, and to have more die into it, so.
Okay, motion to send it to, by Counselor Mercier, a second. Any further discussion? Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report answers questions about strategy for the disposal of city-owned property. I would like a complete list of all the properties that this report is referring to, for my colleagues as well. The report goes on to say that the city retains properties in all neighborhoods, and there is a review of the tax lien list. Could this council have a list of all properties that you are referring to in this list? Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll get that to the council.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott.
I liken the report that, planning on setting up an internal working group, Madam Manager, to identify any potential tax liens or any other assets that, you know, either might be of municipal use or not, and if not, then we dispose of them. We've done a pretty good job since nineteen ninety-nine. We've sold almost twelve million dollars in collected, twelve million dollars of liens, meaning other, the city gets, collects the money, and then other third-party individuals go out and collect the tax delinquency, and I, that's, that's significant, I think. And we've collected almost eight hundred thousand in rents and fees for leased and licensed property, so are the sources of revenue that we're always looking at. So I commend you and CFO and the entire, but I think, I think that internal working group is a good way to stay on top of these liens.
Thank you, Counselor. The, the working group with DPD, law, finance, inspectional services, people who deal with these properties in different, from different angles to come together and review, you know, in detail each one in a, in a strategy as to how to approach and deal with those.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions on motion response C, outdoor seating? Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, when I made a motion, this exactly, was exactly the response I was looking forward to it, and I'm not sure, Madam Manager, if Mrs. Trad or Ms. McCall is here to, to speak on it, you know, if they wanted to explain it, and then just a quick comment.
Sure. I think Christine McCall is on to speak to it. Christine?
Thank you, Madam Manager, to you, to the rest of the council. Thank you, Counselor Rourke, for the motion. Essentially, we're proposing that we extend the current temporary outdoor seating program to December first. It's currently set to expire on October thirty-first of this year. We think pushing it off another month, which is similar to what Boston has done, will allow our restaurants to take advantage of outdoor seating for a little bit longer. And then we, myself, DPW, and the Law Department have already started convening, talking about a permanent ordinance, but we are going to suggest that we keep the temporary ordinance in place for now until the state of emergency is lifted. It gives us flexibility to work with businesses. And then any restaurant that is interested in keeping their streetery and/or sidewalk seating beyond December first, we're going to work with them to sort of pilot it, to see how a year-round program may be implemented in the future, in a non-COVID future.
Great, yes, yeah, that's terrific. I don't think we can do better than that as a city to assisting our businesses, and I'm, to vote on and, if it was just in place, I'm totally fine with, with the response that's here, Madam Manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We hear that there's like twenty-eight restaurants that, and out of that, how many are offering the outdoor seating? We don't know that total yet. Would, would it be the whole twenty-eight, or do you think?
So I believe we have, I believe we have closer to thirty restaurants that have some version of sidewalk seating or streetery. About twenty applied under the temporary outdoor seating program. We've already heard from some restaurants that they want the jersey barriers removed on the thirty-first, the original date, but I've been in contact with almost everyone on the list, and most have expressed interest in trying to keep the outdoor seating beyond December first. So we'll keep the council apprised on the final number going into the winter.
Yes, thank you very much. And Counselor Rourke, that was a very good motion that you proposed, and I wholeheartedly support this. It's a great partnership between the businesses and the city, and I know that further along in the agenda here is a vote from the Department of Transportation for a hundred and forty thousand dollars to support businesses with the streetery program to help procure propane heaters, landscape and material, installation, and things that will help the businesses. So we're asking them to help us in the city and promote the downtown and, and not only the downtown, the downtown in different neighborhoods like Couples Square. So this is a good gesture, and there is also a vote to support an ordinance in seven-point-two to extend the temporary outdoor seating program to December first. So there's a lot in this agenda this evening that bring attention to Counselor Rourke's -- So there's a lot in this agenda this evening that bring attention to Counselor Ruck's motion, and I think that's how we are trying to support the businesses, because what they're going through is devastating with this COVID. So thank you very much for the city coming on board to do that for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Ruck's motion was right on point to help the small business, particularly the hospitality type of restaurants and bar and function. I think along the line is echo Counselor Mercier's that, you know, the Mass Department of Transportation offered this money, so not only that we will look to work, maybe try to have this outdoor open during the winter, but on top of that, there's grand here of 140,000 to help with the propane heating and all the other things that needed to some of these small businesses or restaurants. Certainly go a long way to telling the small business community in Lowell that we're here to support you, do whatever we can to help you, but also a message sent out to those who want to do business in Lowell and said, if you come here, you make no mistake, you make the right mistake, the right choice to being here, because we're here to support our small businesses. So it's great, great.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Thank you, and I know we'll get to it. I just wanted to let the council know, when we set up the agenda, we had applied for $140,000. I commend Christine. We've been notified that we've been awarded $70,000, which is great, but I just, we'll correct that when we get to it. But this is the good point. The state acted so quickly before we could even get it, before the council, to say, can we apply for this and expend it if we get it? They said, here you go, you've got, you know, you've got this money. So it's good news, but I just, we'll correct it as we get there.
Thank you. Counselor Ruck?
I'm sure that Christine's watched the whole meeting regardless, Madam Manager, but if those two items are the only thing that's keeping her involved, and if you want to take them out of order, Mr. Mayor, and do 7.2, and then they give the $140,000 now?
Sure. Yeah, okay. Okay, 7.2, so motion takes 7.2 on a order. Ordinance to amend sidewalk seating outside restaurant. So ordinance, and ordinance amending the code of ordinance as City of Lowell, Massachusetts, to amend, to amended by Chapter 243, Article 4, sidewalks generally by amending 243-23 entitled "Street Seats in Public Space." So I need a motion to send, refer this to a public hearing on October 27th, 2020, at 7:00 PM by Counselor Ruck, seconded by Counselor Chow. Okay, thank you. Now we'll go back to...
Yeah.
Oh, 5.62. Okay, sorry about that. So 5.6, vote to accept and expend $140,100 shared street and spaces. Motion away the full reading, second reading by title. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council vote authorizing city manager to accept and expend funds from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation in the amount of $140,100.
And, Mr. Mayor, that figure should be 70,000, 70,100, I believe.
70,100. Okay, where are we? So roll call. Motion by Counselor Ruck, seconded by Counselor Noon. Roll call. Counselor Mercer?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Ruck?
Yes.
Counselor Savaros?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway? Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Elliott? Yes. Okay, back to motion response D, rental property manager proposing. Counselor Ruck?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, again, Madam Manager, I think it's the perfect response. Look forward to hopefully having this in front of us to making the ordinance change. I don't know if it's the Slagel's here, wants to explain it, but I think that provides everything a neighborhood want, especially for those properties that are not kept, you know, up to date or as clean as they can be. And I think it'll be a benefit, again, to both the city and to the neighborhood, to the neighbors. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Slagel is on, and this would require an ordinance change that would bring before the council, if that's council's wish, to be voted on at a later date, to change the ordinance to make this a requirement so that the neighbors would know who the property manager is. Not just the neighbors, but tenants sometimes don't know who the property manager is, so it would benefit everybody to have that clear signage.
If you need a form of motion, Mr. Mayor, I can make that to vote on it, to put it into the ordinance.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Ruck, seconded by Counselor Elliott. So Mr. Slagel's all set?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Motion response E, remote learning enrichment programs. Counselor Drinkwater, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And everyone, please accept my regrets for not making it into the chamber tonight. As you might be able to hear in my voice, I woke up today with some cold symptoms, so I thought I would just stay away and do the meeting remotely. But thank you very much for this, this report, very thorough. And this was something that I filed, you know, at a meeting right around the beginning of the school year. I was getting outreach from parents who were looking to line up some sort of supervision or childcare for their children during the day, needed to access remote learning. But, you know, there are many parents out there who had to work, had no choice, and needed some sort of supervision for their children. So I know many of our providers here in the city that provide, pardon me, before and after-school care have utilized the government executive order to expand that to during the school day care, which is very good organizations like the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, CTI, others. But I know there's more capacity needed, and the government executive order did provide for an additional type of new remote learning supervision that's approved at the local level. I know it's a little, it's a new and kind of potentially complex and burdensome process, but I was kind of curious about whether any vendors have applied through this process to hopefully add capacity to remote learning supervision. Was somewhat surprised to find out through the report that no vendors have yet tried to go through the process essentially to get a licensing exemption from the State Department of Early Education and Care, approved by the city. I'm hoping in the future to be able to add capacity, especially if potentially we have students going from in-person learning to remote learning, there's going to be a much bigger need for this. So I'm hoping there's a way for vendors to be able to, you know, find a way to offer these services in the city. So I, you know, will continue to kind of think of ways, perhaps we can, you know, collaborate with the school department on if there are any way to bring vendors in to provide these types of services, because I think it is very important for working parents. But appreciate that, you know, thorough process has been set up and that Development Services is ready to approve, you know, these new programs, new applicants, if they're able to put something together. So thank you very much again for the report.
Thank you. Motion response F, citizen traffic control protocol. Counselor Conway? Any questions?
The mic is muted.
Yep.
I want to thank Natasha for, you know, putting the, putting this motion response together. I think that taking into consideration Natasha is not here at this point, and I believe that we are looking for her replacement, and I think it might be a good idea at this point if we, if we put off this motion response and wait until the new individual is on board and they can take a look at that motion, examine it, and also the response, and then bring it back to the city council for a review.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion response G, social distancing mask requirement. Counselor Noon, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the report, Madam Managers. You know, this is to everyone out there that, you know, the city government can only do much. I know that the manager and her team have been, you know, putting out the other message throughout the social media in multi-language, ranging from Spanish, Burjegi, Burjegi's, Kamai, and other to the community so that they understand that they do have a role to play to curb this COVID-19. So I thank you for doing that. Please continue to do that, and, you know, I would ask everyone out at home to do the same, because they have a role to play here, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Counselor Savaros?
Thank you. I want to thank city manager for the report and for Counselor Noon for making this request. I just have an observation to make, but last weekend, I was in the George Street area going over towards Central Street, and for whatever reason, I started counting people there. I counted about, I think the number was 33, and of the 33, only two people had masks on. And that was bothersome. I mean, there are, then I went onto Merrimack Street, and it seemed that there were a number of people with their masks on by the, nearing the restaurants. And I don't, I don't have an answer, as Counselor Noon stated, and we just can't arrest people. But the thing is, I don't know what else we can do to suggest to people that on board is to wear a mask. I think people are getting tired, but at this point, we know the numbers have increased rather significantly, and especially in Lowell, and I think we're all concerned about that. And so I don't have an answer, but all I know is that it's problematic, and there are areas in this city where there are a number of people just not wearing masks. I don't have a suggestion, but the thing is, maybe with the DP Plan Development can work with some of the local businesses to get the word out or what have you, but that's my concern. But thank you for the report.
Thank you. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's a great motion by Counselor Noon. Thank you for the report, Madam Manager. We cannot talk enough about wearing masks. A few months in now, I think some people all the, they feel tired of it, but given the current situation, it's actually more dire that we all should wear masks. I also have a question. I don't know if Madam Manager can answer, or somebody can answer this. Just not, some people wear masks, but they have different ideas of what is considered proper or safe. I've seen people wear masks, you know, to cover the mouth and the nose, but some people that they do wear masks, they do feel like they are compliant, but they only cover the mouth, not the nose. Is there any health differences in term of protection between covering your whole mouth and nose, or just the mouth? Can someone explain that?
Yeah, and this is something that certainly the Health Department has been reaching out to the public, that you should wear a face covering, and it should cover both your nose and your mouth in order to be effective, not just to protect you, but to protect others as well. And so it does require, you know, mask-up campaign is to cover both nose and mouth.
Thank you. Motion response H, boards and commissions. Counselor Noon?
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager, for the report.
Thank you. Citizens Advisory Committee, Diversity Training, HR. Counselor Elliott, any questions on that?
No, good update. Thank you, Madam Manager. Staying focused on issues that have been raised, so I appreciate it. Still looking at the audit, $160,000 was not affordable, but you're looking at revising the scope. I think that's important, but we haven't taken our eye off the ball, and that's why I filed the motion. Appreciate the update. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. Counselor Chow, any questions on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, the city solicitor, for this very straightforward and simple report. It goes straight to the heart of the matter, trying to include as many organizations, entities, groups, individuals, public sector, private sectors possible, to have representatives come together and try to resolve this diversity, equity, and inclusion issues. You know, there's a whole bunch of organizations listed here, but by all means, that's not a complete list. I would also, would include the Greater Lowell Health Alliance in there and the Commission on Disability, if you would, Madam Manager. I just have a question to maybe the city solicitor or Madam Manager. How do we plan to reach out not only to these organizations, but especially to individuals who might have an interest in becoming a member, become a representative on this task force? Thank you.
Thank you. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council, in terms of the specific organizations, I would expect that communication would be sent to them to ask them to have people indicate their interest by sending in a letter and/or resume. As far as other individuals, what we have done, what we've done, again, most recently on the Citizen Advisory Committee, we've posted those positions, we've put them out through the network, we've put them out to our partners throughout the nonprofit world and others, and have done outreach to solicit people to apply to be on this. And so it does take a fair amount of work from our HR department and my office, but we do actively seek individuals in the community by posting and utilizing social media, utilizing all avenues that we have available to us. And so I would expect the same would apply here. I know the solicitor's on, maybe she can add to that.
That's, I mean, that sounds 100% correct to me. I don't really have anything else to add to it. They would be advertised and go through, I guess, a process similar to what was done with the opioid task force. All of these appointments would go back, as it's written, would go back to the council.
Thank you. And just so people know, the report states, with the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force, the mission statement, the emphasis will focus on developing both long-term and short-term solutions to address inequities in community systems and city policies regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. So thank you for the report, Madam Manager.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question. I'm a little confused with something here. I wonder if somebody could help me out. I think it was back in July, the council, if I recall, we voted to create a, create a new ordinance, and it was, I believe, called the Citizens Advisory Committee. And I'm not sure, are we actually duplicating, duplicating committees? Because I think we have, the city manager now is, has advertised and is looking for community input, and is this a parallel committee? Or I'm not sure I understand how these two will mesh.
Sure. Madam Manager?
So the, an earlier report tonight outlined what's been done on the Citizen Advisory Committee. The council had passed the ordinance, and then there were nine positions that needed to be filled pursuant to that. We have been advertising those positions, as I just described, outreach to the community in going through media channels, community leaders, social media, et cetera, and also trying to fill specific spots that the ordinance had laid out. In the HR department and the Police Department have set up interviews of people who have applied for that, that committee. of people who have applied for that, that committee. And those interviews, I believe, are scheduled for either later this week or next week. We're still seeking other applications. There are still some spots that need to be filled, especially around students, because they're not in school. So it's been harder to reach students. But we have reached out to the, to the schools, to the college, to the university, to encourage their students to apply. So this has been an ongoing process. So stay tuned.
Yeah, I, I understand that, Madam Manager. But maybe through you, Mr. Mayor, to the, to the maker of the motion, I'm not sure if, is the mission different than the mission to this, what is being proposed now versus what the City Manager is working on at this point? I'm not, I'm not sure I see the difference necessarily in them.
Are you getting confused? There's two different task forces. One's with the police advisory.
I know that. That's what I'm asking. Why, why, why do we have two different task forces? Is, is, how is the mission different? Couldn't it be just one?
One is for the Police Department.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, one is just basically really working with the Police Department. One's kind of just a city advisory task.
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm thinking of is, and I think that we've talked about this numerous times before, all the different committees that we do have, it's very difficult to get people to, to step up to the plate and become part of those, whatever, whatever, you know, whatever organization that we've got, we've got, our committee that we bring forward. There seems to be always a bit of a problem trying to fill the slots. And that's why I'm wondering here. It seems as though it, it almost becomes a Herculean task to, to get all these people on board. And we've got the City Manager working on one group. And now we've got another group working on, on a completely different group. But yet, again, it, it seems as though the mission is, is very similar.
Well, one's gonna really just work out of the Mayor's office, and one's gonna work out of the Police Department, more police issues, and then just kind of work on general issues for the community out of the Mayor's office. So I guess I can kind of see what you're saying. But one's just gonna specifically work with the Police Department. One's gonna work with the city's issue. So Counselor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that the Citizen Advisory Committee is through the Police Department specifically on policing issue. As opposed to one that you are creating now with Counselors Chow is more broader around this diversity, equity, and inclusion group. And that's my understanding. So it, on the issue with the police, it may be parallel. But this is more broader, the task force. That's my understanding. Thank you.
On the new group, how often would they meet?
Well, it's in the making. So probably, we're not, I mean, we're gonna talk about that, I guess. So it could be once a month, could be once a, every two months, not sure yet.
And when they meet, what, what is the, what's the goal? Where does it go?
Will there be, Counselor Chow?
If, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I may, the, my, my understanding is very similar to Counselor Noon's. And our purpose is to, for the mayor's task force is to work on the, specifically the inequities in the different organizations and entities in, in the city. And the membership will be broader. Going to, we are going to include more, where the Citizen Advisory will be more focused, and to work with the Police Department. I appreciate the, you bring up the similarities. But I think once it is in action, I think we'll, you know, we'll try to pay attention to one another, you know. Absolutely, we don't want to waste anybody's time duplicating the work. But if you can see that the Citizens Advisory is focusing on a specific issue, or two or three issues, we'll, we'll focus on other issues that might not be covered in, in one group. I believe that the mayor's task force is, is more broad. Because if you just look at the, the list of organizations that we would like to include, there are more, that they're more multifaceted. There could be big organizations, small organizations, faith-based. I think it'll be broad. I think it'll be a little bit more fluid. And we'll, you know, we'll keep your concerns in mind as not to duplicate any work. Because none of us want to do that either.
So would the information then go to the, to like a subcommittee?
Well, it would just come out to the general council to discuss. Counselor Elliott?
Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I did attend a listening session several months ago. And one of the concerns at that listening session was that two hours wasn't enough. And I will say, there were many, many issues that were brought forward. And I, this, this to me seems like it's sort of a bit of a follow-up. And, and I happen to agree that, you know, whether there are policies on equity relative, relative to housing, or transportation, I can see from Counselor Chow and your motion, that there are various organizations with the delivery of healthcare services, social services, mental health services, whether there are inequities and, and a disparity. In my interpretation, and this group will meet and come forward with any recommendations, any suggestions, any policies to, to address, again, the inequities in the city. So I, I do understand there is a Citizen Advisory Committee specifically just for the Police Department, to, to look and to ensure that everything is consistent and operating fine. And then to me, any other outliers that we, we may not know which, or we know that we need, we need a policy. So I think this is more an exploration or an expansion of that dialogue, and where there are inequities exist. And I just highlighted a couple of them, that, you know, this, this task force will meet and, and bring it to our attention for action, right?
Yeah.
I guess I'm.
No, it's a good point. It's an expansion of the dialogue.
Okay.
Good point. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I would just preach a lot of patience with this. Because I think now we're up to nineteen members. And most of them are pigeonholed to, to certain, either universities, or, or organizations, or whatnot. So I mean, I think it's gonna take a little bit of time to, to find the mix of people in that nineteen-member board. So I would just, like I said, just preach a little bit of patience on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Motion response retired police.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Counselor Samaras?
Thank you. Just for clarification on this board. So this board would be advisory to the City Council?
Yeah, like the opioid task force.
Or it's set the direction?
It's like the opioid task force. They're gonna, they're gonna meet, they're gonna discuss issues, continue the dialogue. And then we'll have updates for the City Council, suggestions. Yeah.
Okay. I mean, shouldn't we, thinking at, at some point, I mean, one of the things that the City Council does, any of the extra work that needs to be done to have a better view as to what's going on, should there be a subcommittee established once this information comes from this particular group? So that the information could be studied in depth? And then those things that need to be worked on can be worked on?
Sure. I mean, it's a work in progress. So as, as things develop, we will see what the needs are and bring that forward. Sure.
I mean, I mean, you know, this, you know, groups like this, I mean, they can create a lot of emotion. As Counselor Elliott stated, they, when the presentation was made, a lot of people felt that there was not enough time. And would they be receiving that type of information? Would they be having meetings in the general public to be able to offer information? Or would it be the, the group just doing the labor and coming together?
Well, I mean, anybody can go to the, I, I'm kind of going off of the opioid task force. So anybody can go to those meetings, I would imagine. So we're gonna have the, set up times for them to meet, discuss issues. And sure, public is welcome to attend. Madam Manager?
If Chris O'Connor's on, she may address this. I'm not certain. I, I think the opioid task force does post their meetings in, in their public meetings.
They do.
In their open meeting law. Christine O'Connor, if you can respond, is that the intent with this as well?
You're correct with respect to the opioid task force. And the intent behind this is similar. So these are meetings that would be intended to be posted as a public meeting. Others could, could attend and listen that are not on the, the committee once it's formed.
Okay. That's good information. But I, I'm still, I still have the floor. I wanted to ask the question as to, I want to ensure that our communication between that task force and the City Council is real, and that we have the, we have the vehicle to ensure that there is good communication. So decisions can be made for the best in, in the city. These are hard times. There are a lot of issues out there. There's a lot of things that we have to do to ensure that the city comes together, supporting everyone in the community. And a lot of work has to be done. But the thing is, it's really looking at, okay, who's responsible? And it's the City Council that's ultimately responsible with the City Manager. So we have to ensure that, you know, that information, it, it becomes readily available to us in a timely fashion, and that we have the vehicle. That's why I suggested a subcommittee or something like that, to ensure that we're able to listen, process, and do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next motion, the retired police officers. Any comments? Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you very much. And I, I'm very pleased that, that we had that settlement. And it's a great opportunity to have, have retired police officers fill in areas that, that we might, that we might need some help. Because after all, they have years of experience and understanding of the community and, and of the job. So again, I think it's a, it's a win-win all the way around. So I'm glad that, that Christine O'Connor, you helped to put this whole package together. So I appreciate that. And I think it's gonna be, again, a positive things for the city going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Manager. Next, school sanitation. Counselor Samaras, any comments? We have a speaker. Would you like the speaker to go first, Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we have Ricky, Rick Underwood to speak on the motion. Mr. Underwood? I don't know. Mr. Underwood, are you, are you there?
Yes. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep, now we can. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gary, Mrs. Manager, City Councilors, good evening. I trust everyone has a copy of the report. If you prefer, I, I read it for the viewing public.
You can just highlight it. Sure.
Okay, sure. So I'd like to clarify regarding the process of the difference between cleaning, disinfecting, and sanitizing. I'd like to give you the definition that's laid out by CDC guidelines. Cleaning removes the germs, dirt, and impurities from the surfaces or objects by cleaning. Using soap and detergent and water to physically remove the germs from the surfaces. This process does not necessarily kill the germs. However, it does lower the, the instances, the risk of infection. Disinfecting clean, kills the germs on surfaces and objects. Disinfecting works by using chemicals to kill the germs on the surfaces or object. This process does not necessarily clean the dirty surfaces, but it does remove the germs by killing them. Sanitize, it lowers, lowers the numbers, but does not kill the germs. And out of these, these three defined items, we prefer to use the disinfecting and cleaning. We prefer to kill the germs rather than to lower their numbers. We use all the products that we use, our green, green products, safe and usual, and, and specifically designed to treat the COVID disease, the virus, I'm sorry. So I guess I'd just start with what we start in the summer, and then work our way right now, what we're doing right now. The summer processes.
Sure, Rick. Mr. Mayor, we, we got the report. We don't, if you can summarize, fine. But it's a three-page report, and we have a lengthy agenda.
No, thank you. We do have a long agenda. So if you just wanted to summarize it, it's a very good report. It's thorough. So we're just looking.
I really didn't want to read it anyway. It's a kind of a long report. But I'd be happy to answer any questions on it. What I can tell you is, I know we, we've been to several of the schools. Mr. Mayor, you've been through. Mr. Samaras, toured the schools. We think we've done a great job in the cleaning the buildings. The city have done an outstanding job to bring us to where we feel where we're safe to everybody in the building. I'd happy, happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Yeah, a question. Do I have the floor again, Mr. Sam?
Sure. Counselor Samaras?
The question, Mr. Underwood, my only concern, I mean, the outline you gave us is very good. And that's what I expect. And I think that's what our teachers, our parents, our students want and need. As also people who work at City Hall, things like that. What do we do to ensure that the process actually takes place week after week? Because, you know, I, I pointed out to a, a situation where I've observed in the city, you know, more and more people not wearing masks. They're just tired of it. But sometimes we set up a process, and for whatever reason, people get careless in it. And, and this is a time when we cannot afford to be careless. So, I mean, how do you monitor, you know, a task like this? Because this goes way beyond what our expectations were for people working in the school department to handle.
Yes, no, absolutely. So we're, we're all in this together. It's a collaborative effort between everybody, the staff, the principals, the custodian team, security teams at Lowell High School. It's a mixed process of signage, reminders, communications, and visual inspections of people coming in. Nobody comes into the buildings at any school that I know without a mask. Whether they take it off in there, I mean, of course, we don't want it. But nobody comes in our buildings without a mask. The signage that we put out, the instructions that we give, we're hoping that everybody adheres to that.
Sure. And I was at two schools today, the, the Green Elge and the Maury. And the signage is up, the hand pumps are out, the custodians are right on top of everything with the, with the principals and vice principals overseeing it. So everything is, seems to be going well so far. Counselor Samaras?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Thanks, guys.
Any other questions on this? Informational, Madam Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if I could, since, since we just discussed this subject with, with the schools, if I could make a personal point of privilege to bring up the, the COVID situation in the city?
Sure. So suspension of the rules by Counselor Mercier and Counselor Rock?
So I, I am aware of the letter that went out last week, Mr. Mayor, signed by you and a superintendent concerning the possibility of it flows in red for this upcoming week, that school will be going all remote. I guess the question I would have is, one to the manager, is any idea of the numbers going forward for tomorrow? And I believe we're at sixteen point nine right now. If that number, I'm gonna guess it'll probably still be in the red no matter what. But if that number is twelve, thirteen, fourteen, is it still the intention, Mr. Mayor, to go all remote? If, if that's the case, starting next week?
If we drop down to twelve, you mean?
Yeah, we're still, we're still gonna be in the red.
Yeah, as long as we're still in the red, I think we're gonna be on the cautious side and, and do remote till we get back into the yellow, I would assume. But we are gonna keep monitoring the, the numbers.
So again, the numbers are at sixteen now. If they do go down, but they're still in the red, and, and, you know, Mr. Underwood just said that everybody walks into the school with masks, and is clean, is disinfected every day. And those students that are in school right now are our most vulnerable, right? And Madam Manager, has any outbreaks or anything to trace back to schools, as far as you know?
Counselor, as far as I know, the, there have been a few cases, but no, no outbreak per se in schools. There have been some cases in, in the schools, but they may have been from other locations. The number is not huge. But, and there have been some cases, we presume, based on ages of students who may be remote learning, too. I mean, the, in terms of looking at the. I mean, in terms of looking at the ages under 19 years old and who those students are. As far as cases, Counselor, we do have numbers up through today. In the, essentially, the numbers over the weekend, you know, were, they've been up and down. We had 26 cases on Friday. We had 22 cases on Saturday, seven on Sunday, eight on Monday, and 18 today. So they've kind of bounced around a little bit. But we estimate our average as of tomorrow, we'll know when the dashboard is released by the state, but it's probably going to be in the 16, number 16 area range for, per 100,000 residents, which would be certainly in the red. We're pretty certain that Lowell will be in the red, just given what our numbers have been, because it's a 14-day look back. So we do expect to be red tomorrow. We should get those numbers by 6:00 normally.
And, Mr. Mayor, so as a school committee or as a school administration, are those taking into account, you know, where the cases come from and, you know, the need for our students that, again, are most vulnerable to be in school? You know, I'd be curious to find out how many students are in school learning right now that have opted to go remote. Whereas if you asked those remote students if they want to go into school, if they would do that even now, you know? And I know that the arbitrary red, yellow, green setup by the governor is what we go by. But again, 16 per 100,000 when you have 3,500 students in school. I just hope a lot of things are taken into account before a decision to go all remote because I think once we go all remote, you know, good luck getting back into the school probably this calendar year. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we're taking all things into consideration, but we're trying to follow the state's guidelines, Health Department guidelines, DESI guidelines. And it's not an easy decision, but it does affect everything: students, staff, teachers, parents, you know, guardians. So it's a combination of everything to make this decision. Not so much, you know, it doesn't have to be just are the students infected, but there's staffing issues and parental issues and things like that.
Sure, but, you know, again, but to know that the schools are clean, disinfected every single day, and that everybody that walks into the school has a mask on, and that they're all socially distant, you know, you would think that the school, for those kids, is probably the most safest place they could be.
I know. It's not an easy decision, but try and do the best we can. Sure, Madam Manager?
Thank you. I just wanted to just say that we have been in close communication with the superintendent today, Friday, tomorrow, and that includes the Health Department, in trying to balance the data and the, you know, dashboard or, you know, the color code with the needs of the students. And I think that's been of paramount importance. And the educational needs of the students is a big concern. I will say that it's been a bit concerning that DESI has the dashboard, the red, yellow, green, but it hasn't really answered specific questions per each individual community. And I think that's been the frustration, is looking at each individual community. You know, what works in one community may not work here in a Lowell. And so that's been a little bit less clear in terms of guidance from DESI.
Will the Health Department tomorrow make a recommendation on school?
Well, the Health Department won't make recommendations, per se, on education, but will certainly give input and share the data. And so that's been the role of the Health Department, is to share the data that we have, not just the number of cases, but what it looks like. Is it community spread? Is it an incident or an occasion that has driven the numbers up? In the past couple of weeks, pretty much, the Health Department's view is it's community spread, though there's certain neighborhoods that have been much higher than others, and so that's something of concern. But we haven't had, for instance, it hasn't been the university. They've been testing pretty heavily at the university. They test everybody at least once a week, and they've had very, very few, single digits of cases. So they haven't been a cause for it, nor have our nursing homes, surprisingly. In the spring, that was a source of cases, not just in terms of COVID cases, but deaths were attributed to the nursing homes. That has not been the case this fall. So the Health Department does monitor it every single day.
And they contract tracing as well?
We're doing some contract tracing. We're doing, so when the nurses went back to school over the summer, the school nurses were doing contact tracing, so we had access to 20 or more nurses to help in that regard. Now that they're back in school, we're down those numbers. So the Health Department will each morning keep some of the cases and then turn some of them to the CTC, which essentially goes to Lowell Community Health Center, is what has happened for contact tracing. But there are some that they will keep because of the nature of the cases and so forth.
Right. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure myself along with other councilors and probably yourself as well, continue to get phone calls about how do I get my child in school to learn, right?
Right.
You know, that, you know, this, you know, may not be working as well as if my child was in school. Are you aware of any family that has pulled their child out of in-school learning to go remote?
I'm not, but I don't know if the mayor-
I don't know specifically, but I've heard some are pulling out, so.
All right, thank you.
Not a lot, but a few. Okay. All set. Thank you. Madam Manager, informational reports?
Yeah, I would ask the CFO, Mr. Baldwin, to speak to this report for the council.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I just want to take this opportunity to share some good financial news. We did sell earlier in September $59.9 million bond to fund a number of capital projects. One of the major concerns across municipalities with coronavirus was that it would freeze the credit markets, and municipalities would have difficulty accessing municipal credit markets or would be faced with large interest rates. That is not the case. It's due in part to the city's financial management. We received a 1.89% interest rate on that bond. And as a component of the bond sale, there was a refunding bond sold, which is, it's much like refinancing your home. If you have better credit and the rates are good, it's good to refinance outstanding debt. The city was able to achieve $824,000 in savings through that refunding opportunity. And attached for the council as part of the packet is a copy of the credit report provided by S&amp;P associated with that bond sale. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was good news in light of a lot of sort of not-so-good news. This is a good thing. I think it's another reflection, and I'm not taking credit by any stretch, just a little piece, because it does talk about the institutional organization that is well-suited to support recommendations in the financial policies and procedures. It's a strong institutional framework, has positive credit factors. And I think that's the team, I think it's the council, the administration, that continues to give us a double A, capital double A, minus. But it's one of the top ratings, which allows us to compete. This was bid, so when bidders go to look for, okay, we're going to, there's a loan order, this, we're interested in bidding because this, that this city, this municipality has strong financial policies and practices. They have strong liquidity, and again, institutional framework. So, you know, 800,000, that is a testament to the fact that we have reserves, we're prudent in our approach to spending, we don't have too much debt, we don't have too little, we invest in our capital infrastructure. So I, you know, what was interesting to me, and I read the report, were the economic factors that they take into consideration, i.e. development projects that are coming out at Ayers City and Industrial Ave, naturally, the Hamilton Canal, because those are projects that at some point are going to generate revenue, and that's part of the whole financial foundation. So I'm going to stop. I know it's, this is just really, again, more good news, in spite, and they do reference the COVID impact, and still, we maintain that rating with the possibility in the future of moving up to a double A positive. So credit, you know, you, Madam Manager, and your team, and everyone that makes sure that we deliver the services. We don't want to impact residents with taxes too much. And I think that balance with our stabilization, I mean, it goes on and on and on, but good news. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on the financial? Thank you. Next one, informational presentation from the WIN companies?
Mr. Mayor, we did speak with WIN companies earlier, and they've agreed to put this on for the next council meeting. It was an important presentation. It was going to take some time. And looking at our agenda, knowing what we were up against, we thought it would be prudent to put them on a night that we can give more attention, where we don't have a three-week gap in between meetings. So they will be here the next meeting to make a presentation because the topic is really important in terms of affordable housing and how we can do more.
Sure, thank you. Okay, any motion to accept and place on by-
It's a move.
Sure, by Councilor Elliott, second, by Councilor New.
Mr. Mayor, unless we have any of the appointments on Zoom to speak, could we bundle 4-3 to 4-6?
Yep. Just add that.
Second.
Second, so motion to bundle, you got that? 4-3, appoint Carol McCaffrey as Sustainable Sustainability Council. Appoint Latasha White to the Veterans Commission. Appoint Robert Noeg to the Board of Appeals, and reappoint James Pope and Beverly Anfles to the Election Commission.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilor Elliott, second, by Councilor Mercier. Roll call?
Councilor Chris?
Yes.
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 Councilor Smack?
Councilor Chau?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
Can you guys hear us?
No.
Can't hear us? Oh, all right. There we go. Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
And I'll record Councilor Samaras' favor as well.
I just heard you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
The next nine votes, could we do the same thing with the nine votes? And if anybody has any concern with any of them, could we do that?
Sure. So motion to bundle all the votes.
Nine votes.
5-1 through 5-9, with the exception of 5-
5-10.
The transfers and the receipt of grants for particular, I just wanted to speak on one, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Because I think it's important when you get a chance.
Oh, I'm not saying you can't speak on it. I'm just saying-
No, I'm good with it.
Mercier, Elliott, bundle, and then we can speak on. Just read.
One of them's coming off.
Read them all first?
Yep.
5-1, accept a gift from Tewksbury Police Department. 5-2, vote to accept and expend municipally, immiscible, vulnerable, preparedness action grant. Vote to accept and expend grant Center for Tech and Civic Life. Vote to apply and expend $100,000 Department of Public Health. Vote to authorize manager requests approval for second plan change from the DHCD. Vote authorize city manager to expend the LDA with, will we pull that one off?
That one is going over to the next meeting. We didn't get it back from the attorneys too late to get it to the council, so.
Okay.
We've agreed to put it on for the 27th.
Right, okay. So 5-8, vote supplement appropriation for Paul Memorial Library. Vote to transfer a cemetery. Vote to transfer a library monies. And that's it. Councilor Elliott, you want to speak on?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, going to support naturally all of the receipt, the application expenditure, the grants, as well as the transfer, the minor transfer, the cemetery and the library. What I think is of important to note is the grant that we are receiving from, and I just want to make sure I get the organization correct, Center for Tech and Civic Life. I think that's important for this reason. It's $108,000, $109,000 specifically for the election, making sure that it is going to be safe, it's going to be planned, it's going to be operated, and that's a lot of money that we need for this election. There's a lot of concern about this election, to make sure that it's fair and that there's going to be, you know, enough personnel. And this specifically is going to be used for training, you know, PPE. And anyway, just making sure there's a secure election as well. So I just want to make note of this, that in addition to the city money, we're getting this money from this organization, $108,000, $109,000, to make sure that the people are properly trained and that every vote is going to be counted and it's going to be, there's a process in place. So I don't want to elaborate any more other than this is sort of, it's a positive thing and that there is funding there to, I just want to let people know that the city is on top of it. Elliot's on top of it. You're on top of it. But in addition to that, here's another $109,000 that taxpayers don't have to, that we're not paying for, that it's to, I don't know, it's going to make sure even further.
Right.
More redundancy, that's the word. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you, and I do want to credit the interim election director, Elliot Veloso, for pursuing and being successful, and he's actually here, if you want to say a couple of words. There's also, Councilor Mercier has a motion, and there's some things that perhaps he can just speak to quickly before we get to the next meeting about your motion about letting voters know what they can do, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Hi, good evening, Madam Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, the grant that we received was pro-offered from the Center of, I believe, Civic and Technological Life. It's a grant that's being offered to all municipalities throughout the country through the center, and the source of the money is from several generous donations from various philanthropic organizations, including, I believe, Amazon, which provided funding, which is to be used to ensure effective readiness and capability for the November election. So the categories that were selected as part of my grant submission reflects the needs for the city, and we picked some broad categories so that the money could be used to purchase equipment, not only PPE equipment for our poll workers, but equipment that could be used to help us process the ballots in the process of looking at potentially buying a ballot opener with the grant funding, which would help expedite the removal of ballots from envelopes, as well as other equipment that could be useful in transporting and storing ballots. But again, that's one of many uses that the grant funding could be used for. Additionally, I want to emphasize that as part of the conditions for the grant, one of the requirements of the grant is that the money that is being provided can only be used to supplement funding that has already have been budgeted and used by the city of Lowell. So this money can only be used to supplement and not supplant ongoing efforts that the city has been going through in preparation for the upcoming election. I can certainly say that the city is appreciative of this funding and will use it in addition to our ongoing efforts right now to prepare for the November election. And that includes training, language assistance, and other efforts. So again, we certainly extend our appreciation to the Center for Civic and Technological Life for the generosity of the grant.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Elliot, for pursuing the grant.
Thank you. Councilor Ross?
Yes, thank you. First, let me just say on this particular issue here, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, it says that they're recognizing Elliot for obtaining this grant- this grant, and I'm very grateful for that. And I think that is so important. And I think it's so important to know that if we ever obtain any other grants, could we know in the future all who are responsible for, uh, obtaining each particular grant that comes before us? I think that's very, very important. I mean, people come here in the City Hall to do their job, and they go above and beyond. And I don't think that's part of your, uh, your modus operandi. I mean, you had to do, to do that, but you go out of your way and you look for grants. I don't, I'm very, very humbled by that. Um, and so.
We can do that, Council. And I, I agree with you 100% that someone looks, goes outside and looks for more money to help the cause and help the city.
Above and beyond, right. I meant above and beyond. So, that's good. Um, and having said this and see, um, Elliot over here, is it possible that we could suspend the rules and bring in my motion so I could ask him the, the things that I'm concerned about?
Sure. Motion to suspend the rules by Council Rourke, second by Council Elliot?
10.3.
10.3?
Council.
Okay. So, motion to suspend the rules for bringing, motion 10.3 by Council Mercier. Request city manager have interim election director explain early voting in Massachusetts in order to make voting as easy as possible by extending voting hours for working people installing separate voting drop-off boxes, seconded by Council Elliot. Council Mercier?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this motion is to inform the public as to what steps are in place to help the most people get out to vote and make it as easy and accommodating as possible. For example, there is only one drop box. It may seem like ins- an insignificant thing, but there's one drop box outside of City Hall for all the mail, the bills, the voting. Can we use one box specifically for voting to make it quicker and easier instead of having to separate? That's one issue. And, um, can we extend the hours of voting to make it easier for working people, for, for men and women also who have children? It, it's very tough. Uh, what are we, what hours are we allowing them to come here? If it's, if it's, let's say it's, well, I don't want to confuse people, but let's say it was nine to three. Is it possible that we can accommodate the people that want to vote that, and they work till four or five? Do you know what I mean? Uh, that's what I'm trying to do. Can we expand the hours? How, how, how have we done any, uh, research as to what other communities are doing? That's the best idea in their community. We could utilize that and do it the same. Can we extend early voting for the working people? It's important to me and people that have called me. So, I don't know how you're accommodating the public to get that vote out, because this is a very important time. Not that every time isn't not important, but this is especially important.
And, and certainly, and through you, Mr. Mayor, to, if I can directly address Council Mercier's motion. Um, uh, in regards to the ballot boxes, I am, uh, pleased to report that, um, uh, in response to, uh, you know, uh, issues that came up in the primary, uh, the city administration took proactive steps and purchased two dedicated ballot drop boxes that have been, uh, installed, uh, outside of Lowell City Hall. Uh, one dedicated ballot drop box is, uh, located in the JFK Plaza, uh, and it's located next to the public notice board outside of Lowell City Hall. And the second ballot drop box is located along, uh, the, uh, City Hall entrance alongside, uh, Merrimack Street. So, um, and that one is installed, uh, on the sidewalk and is easily accessible. Uh, the election office maintains exclusive control of these ballot boxes. The keys are secure in our office, and we are the ones who have exclusive control over the ballot boxes. So, we will remove, uh, all ballots that are deposited in those boxes. Uh, additionally, uh, since we have been fielding questions from, uh, various voters who have, uh, made inquiries, uh, the Secretary of State's Office delivered the mail-in ballots, uh, for the November election for Lowell last week. Uh, we have worked through the weekend to get those ready for mailing, and, uh, this morning, we deposited the first load of ballots to our, uh, post offices in Lowell, Dracket, and Billrica. Uh, these are the three post offices that deliver ballots to Lowell depending on their zip code. So, our ballots have been pre-sorted by our poll workers and in the elections office by zip code to facilitate, uh, delivery to our voters here in Lowell. Uh, it is our hope that these ballots will be mailed within the week, and voters should be receiving them. Um, in terms of, uh, the use of the ballot deposit boxes, uh, they are open to the public. So, if you have finished, uh, marking your ballot and have secured it in the envelopes per the instructions contained, uh, in the, uh, ballot kit, as an alternative to mailing it, you can deposit it in one of the two, uh, dedicated ballot drop boxes here at City Hall. Uh, and they will be emptied every day by staff. Again, the election office has exclusive control over them, up until eight o'clock on Election Day. Uh, we cannot accept ballots that are deposited in the deposit box after eight o'clock on Election Day. So, if you are going to take advantage of the ballot deposit box, I recommend that you do so prior to the election. Uh, alternatively, you can also deliver your ballots in person during the hours in which City Hall is open to the public, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Tuesdays from eight o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock at night, and Thursdays from eight o'clock in the morning to five at night.
Excuse me?
Yes, go ahead.
When you deposit your ballot in a box in front of City Hall or in the back, you don't need a stamp on it, right? Do you?
That is correct. You do not need a stamp. Uh, again, once you deposit it in the, uh, the official City of Lowell ballot box, it is considered delivered.
Sure.
And then we accept it. And when we get them, we bring them into the election office, and we timestamp them.
Mm-hmm.
So that there is a record on the envelope as to when we receive the ballots. Um, additionally, it should be noted that if you are mailing your ballot, uh, and you are getting close to the election, and you are concerned that it's not going to reach City Hall in time, if you, uh, take your ballot to the post office and you postmark it for at least Election Day, under state law for the Massachusetts general election in November, so long as your ballot is postmarked on Election Day and we receive it up to three days after Election Day, your ballot will still be counted on a date, uh, after November 6th. So, um, that's a note for anyone who's mailing their ballot, and if they're concerned that it's not going to arrive there in time, we recommend that you, uh, postmark your ballot at the post office, uh, just so, uh, that can be done. Um, and again, uh, what is great about the, uh, ballot deposit boxes is that, um, uh, we will be able to use them in subsequent elections. Uh, the plan is that after the November election, uh, they are currently securely bolted to the ground. Uh, after the election, they, the bolts will be removed, and the ballot deposit boxes will be placed in storage, so they will be protected from the elements. And in subsequent and future elections, we will reinstall them in the ground so that they be, be used by, uh, our voters in future elections. So, again, uh, much credit should be given to the city manager and the city administration for purchasing these ballot boxes so they can be used by our voters in the upcoming election and in future elections.
Let, let me just add that Elliot was able to secure funds from the Secretary of State. Thank you very much.
Uh, in addition, uh, in regards to your second inquiry, uh, counselor, in regards to early voting, um, for the, uh, November election, uh, early voting will be, uh, begin actually October 17th, this Saturday, and will continue on until October 30th, which is the Friday before Election Day. Uh, the city, uh, did, uh, give a, uh, public, uh, it was sort of a press notice that was provided, uh, to the press, and it was published in, uh, the Lowell Sun. And we are also advertising, uh, the hours and the dates on, uh, Facebook and, uh, other, uh, municipal sources and media sources online. Uh, for purposes of this city council meeting, counselor, early voting will be available again starting Saturday, October 17th, and carrying on until Friday, October 30th. On Saturday and Sunday, uh, when early voting will be offered, and that is, uh, Saturday, October 17th, Sunday, October 18th, Saturday, October 24th, and Sunday, October 29th. The hours in which early voting will be available will be nine o'clock in the morning until three o'clock in the afternoon. And again, this is on weekends. On weekdays in which early voting will be available, uh, Monday, uh, Wednesday, and Thursday, the hours in which early voting will be open to the public is, uh, from eight o'clock in the morning until six o'clock at night. We've added an extra hour to accommodate those, uh, voters that are commuting. On Tuesdays in which, uh, early voting is available, we will be open from eight o'clock in the morning until eight o'clock at night, again, to accommodate those voters that are commuting in to the city. And then on Fridays, uh, we will be open from eight o'clock in the morning until noon. And again, this is to mirror the hours in which, uh, City Hall is open. Uh, in, uh, under state law, uh, our hours for early voting needs to at least mirror the hours in which we are open at City Hall. But again, we've added an extra hour to accommodate, uh, those voters that are coming in. And again, uh, early in-person voting will be available at the Lowell Senior Center. Again, this is done to, uh, accommodate COVID-19 safety procedures, as well as to ensure that there is open and available space, uh, for voters that are coming in. Uh, voters are strongly advised that if you are going to be voting in person, you should wear a mask. Protect yourself, protect the poll workers, protect the public, protect each other. If you are voting in person, please, wear a mask. Additionally, uh, social distancing guidelines will be in place for those that are in line, six feet apart. Um, if you wish to bring your early voting mail-in ballot, uh, you can deliver it, uh, to the early in-person voting place if you, uh, don't wish to deposit it here at City Hall. Uh, but again, that's only for early voting. Uh, if you, uh, yes, go ahead.
And what's the time of, of voting in person at the Senior Center? Did you?
Uh, I just, uh, I listed those times, counselor. Again, just to.
Oh, you mean the same?
Yes.
Oh, oh, right here. Okay. I'm sorry.
Just to reiterate, on weekends.
All right. I get it.
Yeah. Saturdays and Sundays, uh, nine to three. Tuesdays from eight to eight.
Yes.
And so on and so forth.
I, I get it. Okay. That's fine.
And that's all on the website and social media and Facebook, so, um, it, it is readily available for people.
Yes. And, uh, the early voting location is going to be single flow, so voters will go in one way, vote, and they will exit out another way through the entrance. Again, we're trying to accommodate COVID safety procedures, uh, for all of our voters and poll workers. Uh, additionally, PPE equipment will be available for all poll workers. They will have full masks, uh, face shields, and plexiglass barriers, uh, during the voting process.
Wonderful.
And just don't forget to sign your ballot, right, when you drop it off?
Uh, yes. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. Uh, yes. During early in-person voting, uh, once you finish, uh, voting and secure your ballot in the envelope, uh, you'll be asked to sign your ballot, uh, before it's inserted in. Uh, and, uh, poll workers will be there to remind people at in-person voting. This might also be a good opportunity to tell all voters watching, uh, City Hall right now, that if you have opted to receive your ballot by mail, please follow the instructions that are provided in the ballot. They are available in English, Spanish, and Kamai. The key things that you need to remember is that, once you have finished marking your ballot, one, you should do, mark your ballot either with a black Sharpie or a black and blue pen. That way, the auto-mark machine will be able to read your ballot when it's inserted. And finally, when you finish marking your ballot, you need to secure that ballot in the Manila EV or AV7 envelope that is included with your packet. And then you must sign your name on that envelope when you seal your ballot in there. If you fail to either secure your ballot in that envelope or fail to sign it, your ballot will be rejected. So, please, follow the instructions that come in your ballot so that your ballot will be counted on Election Day.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Elliot.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great.
Council Elliot?
Um, I think that we should create a YouTube, um, of Elliot for the rest of the country, like Florida and all these other places that are going to have some troubles. But we are, in my opinion, we're not going to have any problems here in the City of Lowell.
Yes.
Thank you, Elliot.
Yeah, certainly. And to that point.
And don't be going to Florida.
And to that pound, uh, point, counselor, I've also actually prepared a video recording that, uh, we're planning on putting up on YouTube, and I'm going to provide it to LTC that might provide guidance.
Let's get the royalties of that.
Oh, wow. Nice save. Yes.
It's quite all right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Elliot. And thank you for all you do. I will, I will tell you, counsel, um, I, I can hear Elliot instructing, um, our poll workers and training them. And, uh, let me tell you, we are going to have the best-trained poll workers. There's not any doubt in my mind.
I was kind of kidding, but I was also very serious. I, I think that Elliot has set the standard.
He has. And he's so thorough, and he answers questions and, and, and leaves little room for doubt for, for our workers. So.
He's got a great.
Should have trained Veloso. We answer all the motion responses, Madam Manager.
Yes.
All responses should come through him.
He's got a great name.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot.
You're welcome, Madam Manager.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Okay, motion passes. Uh, back to the votes. Need a motion to adopt the votes by Council Elliot, second by Council Mercier. Roll call.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaris? Uh, Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
That's nine yays.
Ordinances from the manager. Sixty-day trials. Wait permission to wait the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Uh, Conwell, Massachusetts, City of Lowell, in City Council, order pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Mass., concerning Section 266-6, therefore entitled temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations, hereby implemented for a period of up to 60 days. Any questions? Uh, motion to, uh, what's, uh, rec- uh, motion to adopt by Counselor, uh, Noon, second by Council Elliot. Roll call.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaris?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Nine yays.
Ordinances from the city manager. Ordinance amending, amend zoning. Uh, first motion, motion to refer to Planning Board for important recommendation on November 2nd, 2020 into a public hearing on November 10th, uh, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Motion by Council Rourke, second by Council Chow. Ch-ch-ch-ch. Ordinance create position and salary nurse case manager.
Yes.
Uh, ordinance to create position and salary nurse case manager in law. Uh, motion to refer to public hearing on October 27th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Motion by.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Is this position for 19 hours or 25 hours? What, do we know that?
Uh, Chris O'Connor or Connor, if you can address.
Is this a?
So, currently, counselor, this is a, uh, position that we have had with the city. We're obligated by law to have a nurse, uh, case manager position. And, um, uh, we have, um, for many years now, had a contract for those services. And the, uh, contract is roughly for about 18 to 19 hours per week for, uh, $68,000 a year. Um, through negotiations, we did manage to get the, uh, the nurse, um, stationed in the Law Department. And if you recall, we also negotiated with our, uh, city physician to have, um, uh, physical examinations at City Hall as well. And, um, the, uh, the reason for this, uh, motion and proposal is that we have an opportunity to save money, uh, and to increase the hours. And the hours would be increased to the range of, uh, 25 to 30 hours a week. Uh, we would, uh, settle on a, a final number. And it would be for a, um, uh, a salary, uh, starting at $60,000 a year. And the, the other thing, too, is again, with the increased hours, um, these are services we have for workers' comp, 111F retirees, and the entire school department is, uh, handled by one, uh, workers' comp agent, Karen Gagnon, for, for all of that, and one nurse case manager. So, by increasing the hours, um, it's, um, it will have a, an added impact on the, um, on the city.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, this, um...
So this opening, this hiring, has to do with the nurse case manager. So in the past, the Law Department would farm it out to a company or an individual. So do you, when you say that, that last year, you pay roughly somewhat like $68,000 for eighteen hours, does that just based on one year, did you look at the last three or four years and see what is the average of that? And if we were to hire this person, then the contract, we would not pay for benefit and all that. So when we add this to it, what is the, but the benefit in, in additions to the $60,000 we are be talking about here for twenty-five hours or so?
Sure. So the, the contract that we've had, it's, this would be taking the position, the, the individual who's been with us probably for about six years, seven years now, and they are willing to, to come aboard as a, as an employee at increased hours and less than the, than the contract price. As far as what we've looked at in other years, in other years, actually, we, in past years, we spent a lot more than that. And, and so it was really just through negotiation that we managed to have nursing services come in at $68,000 a year and, and really try to, to stick to that. But in prior years, it used to be even, it used to be significantly more. And we did not have a nurse on-site, and so we lost a lot of efficiencies. As far as benefits, you know, you can't really ask an individual what they're going to be, going to be doing, so.
Thank you for the response, Solicitor. I'm looking forward to the public meeting and to hear more from people. Thank you.
Dr. Elliot, do you have a question?
So, you know, I, I have, I have concerns about adding even a partial FTE or a part-time person, knowing what the next fiscal year looks like. But I'm gonna support this for this reason. This saves us thousands, literally. I just got the figure from Ms. Ballen. We budget $925,000 for, for workers' comp. But what this does is, this gets the services to the individuals that are out on workers' comp, cuts the red tape with the orthopedic or the, the primary care, and gets them, get them the, the treatment that they need, rather than they go out and one's bouncing one from the next and it gets, so I think that Ms. Gagnon has, her job has paid dividends. There are more, more cases, I'm glad to hear. This is gonna be for the school and for the city. And we have to, this is an area where we have to save some money, and this position will do that. You know, in the past, years past, long time, it was kind of a, I guess it was kind of a runaway freight train because the left didn't know what the right was doing, and we brought in, we, we hired somebody who was, at some point in time, was contracted out, and now we have someone doing it full-time to make sure the individuals are, they're getting injured, but they're getting the treatment, and then they're getting back to work. So there are, our workers' comp claims numbers go down. So I'll stop there, but I, I'm, I'm gonna support this because I do think it's a, it's without question, it's absolutely needed and will absolutely save us thousands and thousands of dollars and get people back to work.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Where are we? Right, motion, motion to refer to public hearing on October 27th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. by Council Noon, second by Council Rourke. Reports to Subcommittee, Neighborhood Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a Neighborhood Subcommittee this evening, myself, Council Noon, Council Mercia, Council Elliot was also in the meeting as well as Mayor Leahy stopped in as part. Tonight's order of business was the request to amend the license to add 15,000 gallons of diesel fuel over at the, at the Mocley Company area. We did hear from, from the Mocley Group of what their plans are. The, the reason for the use of the fuel is for three new generators on the north side of the building, around 6,000 gallons per, per tank. The diesel fuel storage is for the new generators. This was talked about at the August 25th City Council meeting where a couple of neighbors spoke of some concern. And on September 30th, the, the Mocley Group met with, with the neighborhood to go over some of their concerns that, that were, that were brought up, including, you know, some of the smoke stacks, the placement of, of water gallons, the beautification of, of the area and so forth. The two speakers, the neighbors that, that did speak, did have concerns remaining, but they were satisfied with the progress that was, was happening. Council Noon spoke to the Mocley Group directly and asking them to further continue the, the talks between the company and the neighborhood. And also, Council Mercia mentioned the hundred million dollars that Mocley is putting into, to their facility and to their grounds, which includes, you know, hundreds of new trees to be planted, grass areas and overall beautification of a very downtrodden area before the Mocley Group came, came to Lowell. At the end of the meeting, Council Mercia made a motion to support the request for the permit to go forward to the council here this evening, to move forward with their, with their project, which was voted unanimously by the Subcommittee. And with that, Mr. Man, unless Council Mercia or Councilor Noon have anything to add, we can take up that motion now.
Council Mercia.
I just wanna briefly say, and I could talk all evening about the Mocley Group and the credit that they have given to the city, and they have done such a tremendous job with that facility. If you look at what it was like six years ago and you see the way that it is today, and their business is unbelievable. I don't know that much about it, but let's say that we take pictures with our phone and it can only store so much. But instead of losing the pictures or the film or whatever you're taking, and instead of it just stopping and not allowing you to take anymore, it allows you to take more because the rest of it goes into the cloud and it's stored there. And this is what this facility does on Prince Avenue. It, it just stores all that data from different companies, from, you know, the hospitals, from Amazon, from all this stuff. And they're expanding. They took us on a tour and we saw this beautiful open space, and I said, oh, is this available for, for more business? And he said, yes, we're already gonna lease it out. So when they require more people, they have to add to the outside because you need this building and that data at a certain temperature. So that's, so there's air conditioning, there's water, there's everything that you can think of, and it's expanding and it's looking so beautiful. And they're building a beautiful wall, it was tremendous. And they're gonna plant trees there and buffer the, the neighborhood. Although tonight, through the callers that called in, only mother and son, they made it seem like, no, it's not happening quick enough. Well, you know, you, how long does it take for a tree to grow? It's not overnight. And so thi- this company has taken telephone poles down that had no meaning, they weren't used. They're cleaning the metal brook, they don't even have to do that, they're getting mattresses and trash out of there, they're do, going above and beyond. So I think they are making a good faith effort and are being a good neighbors, good business. And they're hiring people. When they need the extra people that are, businesses that are coming in, they have to hire more people to maintain that. So they're a good employee and, and they employ a lot of people. So I, I made this motion because I saw firsthand the effort that they're making to make people happy. Sometimes you can't make people happy, but this is not the case with this company, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we need a motion to accept the original.
Yeah, well, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna need a motion, a motion to the, to amend the, the license of the facility to add additional 15,100 gallons of diesel fuel to.
Okay, so a motion by-
Yes.
Council Mercia, second by Council Noon. Any questions, roll call?
Yeah, just wanna add, Council Samaras was also a part of the meeting, and I mentioned that both the DEP and the Lowell Fire Department have fully approved the project. Now, there was some concerns about some gases or something like that, but it was approved and I think concerns of the Subcommittee were, were met with that.
I thought it was Councila Drinkwater, wasn't he the one that was there?
Oh, I apologize.
Councila Drinkwater.
All right, all set for a roll call?
Yeah, just, just, just another indication that this was as part of a public hearing where the public hearing was already held on this matter. So Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Nine yays.
Thank you. And now just a motion to accept as a report of progress by Council Chow, second by Council Mercia. Technology and Utilities Subcommittee, Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we did, we met tonight, 5:30, on Zoom, remote, Councila Drinkwater, Council Samaras, in-person in the chambers, Council Mercia, Council Elliot, Council Rourke, and you yourself, Mayor, from the city. We have City Solicitor, Christian O'Connor, and Commissioner Clancy, and Representative of Comcast Cable, Craig Frank, Senior Managers for Government Affairs, is also joining us. So the two, two topics on the agenda, where, where we at with, with regard to the SciFi that was, the council okay the managers to work and try maybe possible, come into agreement with SciFi, that back in 2019. Also, there has been some communication, according to City Solicitor and Commissioner Clancy, with SciFi. We kind of more wait and see the testing because I know that, they indicated that Salem, Salem Mask, they on, they do a pilot test right now. So we wait and see because, as, as suggested by Solicitor O'Connor, that recommended that we approach this with caution, given the potential long-term impact on our road, should there be any dick and any work done. And this is a long-term, a long-term, so it wouldn't hurt for us to wait and see on this, see how, how that will impact on the Salem, I say, starting their pilot. So moving forward to, so with Comcast Cable, asking them any support they can provide to, for family who find challenge with internet accessibility, right? So great news though, so we heard, I, all of us heard, and I think it's good news, that they do have a program, they're called Essential, you know, program, which is a, they said they've been around for a while. Surprisingly, we didn't know anything about it. So that provide low-income family, every school child in Lowell basically qualify for this program. So, but if you have, let's say, for those family that have, unfortunately, have internet now, you have to wait three months to opt out, I mean, to opt out from that and then to, to do this access Essential program with Comcast and only charge nine dollar, ninety-five cents per month, which surprisingly. So, so, but also you can get nonprofit, even the school to sponsor you in this program. I know that the school department have spent quite a bit of money to, to, to buy a mobile home hotspot, and that's from the Department of Education grant from that, and about a thousand now arrive and maybe a thousand down the road in case we remain high in red and that we may go full in a remote. But this project, this, this program, the Essential program with Comcast Cable is a great new. I, I, I think, you know, we would ask that the managers and her office, you know, communicate with the Craig Frank to get more information on this so that we can let our resident know that if you are, you know, if you have school child that need internet access, capable, mobile hot, mobile, mobile home hotspot only good for some, you know, you have internet that'd be better. So, so that is a good news, that is the report. But also in additions to that, I know that I, we heard from family, I think Council Samaras indicated to me that, you know, he heard from teachers, families, that they have internet access, but then again, we have more than one person access to internet, it's slower, right? So, so, so I asked if they can, you know, he can refer, he can go to the company and said, what can you do to help the teachers to upgrade that service at lower cost, if not no cost? That's all the report. If anybody else, I want to jump in, that's fine too.
Council Rourke.
Yeah, thank you, and to thank Council Noon for having this Subcommittee, I think it was very important, especially with what may happen going forward with, with the, with the students and the schools. I think the biggest thing taken out of this this evening was Mr. Franks, the Government Affairs official for Comcast, stated that at $9.95 a month, a family could have Wi-Fi service through Comcast. You know, the, the hotspots, you know, with what the city, with the school department have planned, they would need at least double of what is planned just to carry the bandwidth that would be needed to, to have service. You know, we're spending $400,000, whether it's through a school grant or a CARES Act for, for the hotspots, but if you look at 400 grand, you take 10 bucks a month, $10 a family, you're gonna 40,000 right there. So, you know, in, in the SciFi stuff that was talked about, you know, the, the amount of, of, of digging and inconvenience for a service that is nowhere near the, the speed or the data or the storage of what's available now, you know, in my opinion, is, is a waste of time. You know, you're looking at a multi-year project that if we ever decide to do it and it gets done, technology would, could totally be different in the next eight to 10 years. And speaking to Solicitor during the Subcommittee meeting, you know, she had stated that we have to be very careful concerning, you know, contracts and how the city negotiates them and so forth, that's not, that's not our purview. But one thing that we can do as a council is to make a motion to, to stop altogether and to move on. And, you know, and being part of, of that Subcommittee and all the valuable information that was brought forward, you know, thanks to the Subcommittee and to Chairman Noon, I would make a motion that we stop, you know, contract talks or whatever with, with SciFi. We see them is supposedly doing it with only 2,000 feet of, of service going in. You know, we could just watch that to see what happens. No other community in this area in the northeast does it. You know, and there's two reasons for that. One, because it's cumbersome, it takes a long time, and the service is not what is expected of Comcast or Verizon or whatnot. And the second reason is, you know, no company is silly enough to put this in and to say it's gonna be free because it's not gonna be free, it's gonna be a huge expense to those that are gonna use it if, if at all possible. So my motion, Mr. Mayor, would be to, to end SciFi talks and to concentrate, as a city and as a school, everybody, everybody always talks about working together and let's try to fix this, is make a full effort to contacting Comcast. You know, Council Noon was correct when he has stated, you have to wait a few months before you get out of, of your plan, but maybe we can talk to them if there is a, a deal to be put in place, you know, to, to help families alleviate that, and to focus our attention on what really matters, and that's providing for our students and, you know, how, and in my opinion, how the school department did not know about this $9.95 deals beyond me. You know, he was asked if there was any communication with the school department, Mr. Franks said he had one conversation a couple of weeks ago, and this is something that should have been done months ago, in my opinion. So I would ask that, again, we withdraw from a- So I would ask that, again, we withdraw from our Sci-Fi talks, and we concentrate 100% on trying to get this done. Thank you.
I second their motion.
So motion by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor.
Second.
Samaras.
Yep.
We need a roll call?
Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Counselor Noon?
If I may, you know, this is just how I feel. I would, you know, this is, came from the Technology and Utilities Subcommittee, when you were chair back then, when you recommend that the managers to enter into this negotiation. I would say that it would not hurt to have this option open, it doesn't cost the city. City, whether Sci-Fi or any other company, need to have alternative in term of cost and service, because we all heard, and that's why when you were chair of that subcommittee, you heard that, people said, you know, the service, they complained about service, they complained about the costs associated with it. Just understand what, I mean, you heard what I said about Comcast Cable, and what they've been able to provide the city, but that's not, that's not going to hurt us to have an option. And in having an option, we are not into it, we wanna wait and see how they do with Salem, to see whether or not we should continue the work with Sci-Fi. I mean, so it's not like we're going to start this service next year. As you heard, it's a long, long, many years kind of work. So I just, I would just suggest that we, you know, hold off on, you know, nullify this agreement.
Okay, Madam Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, so, we don't have an agreement with Sci-Fi, where, you know, the law department has been engaging with them. I think there are a number of hurdles and a number of challenges, and the solicitor kind of alluded to it during the subcommittee, you know, especially if there's any suggestion that the city should be in a very long-term contract, that's a real concern around this, especially technology. So, so there isn't an agreement with them. I think, if I understand, I just am trying to clarify, that we would continue, we would engage or observe what Salem is doing, which they're supposed to do next month, but, you know, not do anything in the interim as far as negotiation. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes.
And that, I think that's something that the solicitor, who I believe is on, would agree with.
I would be in support of that.
Okay.
Sure, Counselor Samaras? Yeah, who have their hand up, Counselor Samaras?
Yes. No, I can see what Counselor Noon is alluding to, but I think Counselor Rourke is correct, in the sense of what my concern is with this Sci-Fi company that we beat, I mean, they talked about if they were to come into the city, they'd have to literally rip up every road in the city. We have Comcast, I've always, I think most of the members of this council have advocated in the past that we have support, that we can try to bring in Verizon, so we can have true competition. I think if we go Sci-Fi, it will nullify competition in the long run at some point. I think we should work on making Comcast do its due diligence, but after that, we should work on Verizon, the major companies that have, already have equipment in the city, to see if we can create more competition. But at this point, I'm very concerned about the project. Salem can do what they want, we can observe it, but I think it holds no value to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we need a vote, a roll call on the motion, right? Roll call.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Samaras.
Yes.
Counselor Chow. Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Eight yeas. Yeah.
So now, just need a motion and a report of progress by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Noon. Petitions and Claims. Three property damage, motion for law department for report and recommendation by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Elliott. 9-2 miscellaneous, Lynn Lowell LLC attorney, George DeRoe, request zoning change to extend UMF zone into LI zone at Four Wigan Street, 153 Wigan. Motion for law department for report and recommendations and draft the ordinance by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Elliott. 9-3 miscellaneous, Joan Carmelli, request permission to address city council regarding property at 25 Arlene Road, and she's...
There, she's connecting now.
Registered to speak. Are you there?
Well, still coming, still connecting. There she is, I think she's there now, Joan. She'll win.
If you're there, Joan, you can speak.
She's got on mute. She's on mute.
Just need to unmute.
Here she goes.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can, thank you.
All right, I'm sorry.
Sure, you have five minutes to address the council, thank you.
Okay, so I've been having problems with the Lowell Public Works. We had a tree that fell down. I was promised that four trees would be taken down. After fighting them for six months, they promised me, and when I called them, they told me they would take them down, and then they denied me. I have contacted everybody, nobody's calling me back, and I would like to know why Eileen Donahue wouldn't take five minutes of his time and call me.
Do you still wanna make this personal at this point?
Excuse me?
Just don't make it personal, if you contacted the manager's office, that's fine, but...
I contacted the mayor, I contacted everybody, tons of times, not even the mayor gave me five minutes of his time.
Okay, well, I'm the ma-
When you people want us to vote for you, you ask us, but when we want something, we get nothing. Did you look at my pictures? Did you see the damage that I got done on my property?
I don't even recall seeing the email, to be honest, that came through, and I answered a lot of the emails.
The emails, I didn't email you, I directly brought a letter there to you people, directly brought a letter, putting you on notice, with 40 pictures, 40 of them.
All right, I don't remember seeing any emails.
I've been at Lowell Public Works for over six months before Corona. I've been talking to Peter for six months, daddy mom, I can list everybody that I have been a hold of, I have done videos on Facebook telling everybody about the problems I have with Lowell, and now you're telling me I got five minutes and not name names?
Well, that's the rules.
And you don't get emails? When I was told, don't send emails, you don't do emails? And you're gonna talk to me like that? And I pay taxes?
I'm trying to be respectful, we did not receive any emails, and I don't recall any letters coming through to the...
I told you, I was told not to do email, you got a letter from me, and I gave it to the girl at the city clerk with 40 pictures.
Okay, Ms. Mayor, Ms. Mayor.
And I thought you got it because it's stamped.
Okay, we got the message, can we get an, what is the status of these trees?
What's the message? I want the trees taken down, and I'm sorry to take them down.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the administration, we, thank you.
All right, we got the point.
I'd just like to know what's going on from the city side, we did hear you, that's all.
You, but you're not doing anything.
Well, we don't, I don't, I don't remember seeing any correspondence, so let's hear from them.
You guys aren't corresponding with me, that's why Lowell's a dump, you're not doing anything.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk? Can we just get a response, Lowell is not a dump, I take exception to that.
So let me just respond, I have, we will get a full report to the council. DPW has received a petition in regard to trees within the public right-of-way on Spring Avenue, adjacent to 25 Arlene Road. Here's the timeline, Michael Bayless responded to a fallen tree on August 6, 2020, as a result of a windstorm. Given the size of the tree limb, DPW contracted with M&amp;M Burbank Tree to remove the limb in the tree on August 11th and August 12th, 2020. The resident requested additional trees on Spring Avenue, adjacent to 25 Arlene Road be removed, and they appear to be in declining health. Upon an assessment of these trees by DPW, DPW hired M&amp;M Burbank Tree to remove two trees on August 27th and August 28th. DPW removed two ash trees declining in health on September 4th, so we've removed five trees so far. A neighbor to the resident removed a private tree in August, and the trunk of that tree was left in the right-of-way on Spring Avenue. DPW coordinated with the private tree contractor to remove this trunk at the end of September. The resident complained about trash gathering within the brush behind her property. DPW cleaned up the trash and some bottles, and on August 25th, and again on September 17th. DPW Engineering Department reviewed the city right-of-way limits on Spring Ave to confirm the relocation of the right-of-way in relation to the fence at 25 Arlene Road. Based on the engineering department's available records, the fence extends about one foot into the right-of-way on Spring Ave. For future fence replacement work, it is recommended that the resident conduct a property survey and relocate the fence to her own property, on her own property line. The resident continued to inquire about two additional trees adjacent to her property. DPW hired a certified arborist to evaluate these trees, a report and recommendation is pending. Both trees appear to be healthy, but the arborist is evaluating the structural stability of both trees. DPW has spent many, many staff hours on this effort for this resident, and to date has spent $5,150 for contractors removing the five trees, and she's requesting two more. I will keep the council posted, but these complaints by this resident have certainly not been ignored whatsoever.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Counselor Mercier?
I understand that residents have issues, and they're very passionate about it, I understand that, but to be rude and demanding, it's not a good thing for your case, and that has been done at the DPW office, and to say our people don't know what they're doing and name-calling, I know a lot of the people that are there, and they're wonderful, hard-working, family people, I know that. And I did go to Peavy Street to look at the trees, and I didn't call, but I did go, and I did look, and I just wanna make this statement. If a tree is deemed that it's a public safety to the public, it should come down, there's no doubt about that. If it's on private property, then it's up to the person that lives there to remove it. If they're deemed to be city property and in good health, there's no reason why we could, we should take it down. And let me just say this, I firmly believe that people have a right to their opinion, but there's a way to address it, and so I'm just a little bit taken aback by name-calling and things like that, yeah, that's not a good thing.
Thank you. Okay, so we just need a motion to refer our city manager for report and recommendation by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Rourke. 9-4 miscellaneous, Tina Degree requests city council develop residential parking program for area around Market and Merrimack Streets. Motion for city manager for report and recommendation by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Chow. 9-5, Tana Omand Pedro Camara requests installation of traffic mirror at Mount Vernon Street and Broadway Street, four-way intersection. Motion for traffic engineer for report, recommendation by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Mercier, Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a very important issue, this is public safety, I don't know how much a mirror costs, but when you need it at a certain strategic point, I think it really deserves to have one, so I hope that she gets it, thank you.
Thank you. 9-6, we have a speaker on this one.
Yes.
Ronald DeBerto requests city council establish a Walk of Fame. Go to the speaker.
I think he's there, Mr. Mayor.
I'm ready, folks, how we doing tonight?
Good, thank you, go ahead.
I'm actually here with, I got representative from one of your council speakers, Chow, has been working with me on an idea that I wish to propose for the city hall. And proposing a Walk of Fame along both sides of Merrimack Street, from the old Lowell Sun Building to the canal on both sides, dealing with people who were born in the city alone, or have moved here, who have made contributions to the nation, if not the world, in the field of media, science, sports, industry, and education. Through my research, I've discovered we have an admiral in the United States military, we have multiple actors, Betty Davis we know of, Olympia Dukakis, we have astronauts, we even have a gentleman who is the first African-American to be integrated in professional basketball, was born in this city. The Walk of Fame would be a unique experience for people to come here, to experience the plaques in the ground, which would showcase, good-sized plaque, picture, name across, and a QR code in the bottom that could be scanned, and take it to a website showcasing this person's achievements. One of the things I found out recently was Milton Bradley, even though he was not born here, went to school here, and we all know Milton Bradley. My proposal is to basically start a committee, or an organization or group that could actually showcase a situation, where we could actually create a Walk of Fame along both sides, that's pretty much my idea.
Thank you very much. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I think Santa is right on the money. But I just wanna say, this is a very good idea, very creative idea, of course, there's Ted Leonsis, there's also Mickey Ward, I didn't see his name mentioned, they made an Academy Award movie after this fighter, so there's a lot of potential there. I know I'll never be on it, but that's okay, but this is a good, good start, I think it's great.
Thank you, Counselor Elliott?
Look, I agree, I think it's a good, it's an idea, and it's a good idea, it's pretty unique, I think we can make it happen, so, I think the request was to set up a commission or a committee, I support that, but I think the motion will be to send us to the city manager for a report and recommendation report back to the council, and reach out to Mr. Ronald DeBerto. So, thank you for your input, your idea, and let's see this through, that'd be really good.
Thank you, Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you, Ronald DeBerto, for speaking, as Counselor Rita Mercier alluded to, Ronald is the, is a Mill City Santa Claus, for many, many years, and providing many entertainment to the children in Lowell, and I love speaking with San, Mill City Santa about this idea. He did a lot of research, and just going through the list here, that he included some of these people, obviously, I don't even know, but they made great contribution to the great city of Lowell, but some I recognize, and I grew up watching them on TV, like Ed McMahon, and a few, you know, the state parties like Olympia Dukakis, or Betty Davis, Nancy Donahue, just, and a few other names that, you know, Counselor Rita Mercier mentioned as well, and I'm sure there are many other names that, with research, we can get some really good people. I can imagine this being like the Hollywood Walk of Fame, and... I can imagine this being like the Hollywood Walk of Fame, and what Ronald was suggesting to have on Merrimack Street from the cobblestone area to the other side, to around the bridge street, and I can see that will bring a lot of tourism into the city, bring a lot of business, or bring a lot of local people around the city just to come to downtown, walk, have fun, just like you would be if you were to go to California, to LA, to Hollywood. You look forward to seeing whose names are on those squares, on those concrete squares. So I think it's a great idea, and I think one thing that I would suggest maybe the city manager could look at with the cool program, the cultural council, to see if there would be any fundings that would provide for some kind of programs or this type of project. So it's very exciting, and I hope that we can make this a reality, make this fun, and, you know, put our city, a great city of Lowell, to be another unique city in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to send to refer to the manager for report and recommendation by Counsel Chow, seconded by Counsel Rourke. Nine, seven, TC Systems Incorporated requests installation of two telecommunication conduits at the intersection of University Avenue and Pataque Street. Motion to refer to a public hearing October 27, 2020 at 7:00 PM by Counsel Elliott, seconded by Counsel Noon. City council motions. Sure.
We have an executive session also scheduled, so if there's no objection, I know I have a couple of motions, and one of them actually has already been addressed, but I make a motion to see if we can all take these all up at once and send them to the city manager to come back and report and recommendation. More often than not, we all speak on our motions when they come back with the information, so I know we have, we have executive session following this, so I'd like to make that in the form of a motion if there's no objection.
Second it.
I'll second it.
I think everybody's seconded.
Motion in bundle. Ten, one, ten, two, ten, four, ten, five, ten, six, ten, seven, ten, eight, ten, nine, ten, 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 eleven, ten, twelve.
It must have been, I wouldn't mind hearing ten, three again, if we could do that.
And ten, three again, because that was a great one.
It's on YouTube.
Yeah. So, motion by Counsel Elliott, seconded by everybody. Counsel Chow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, before we go in, we'll do any announcements?
Yeah.
Any announcements before we go? I can't hear. Oh, the firefighter, yeah. Do you want to say that one, then? You're, okay. So, this Saturday morning, we have the firefighters memorial at 9 o'clock. 8:30 is the parade from Saugus. Anybody wanting to walk in the parade, get to the Saugus at 8:30, but the memorial starts at 9 o'clock at JFK. Counsel Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it possible that, I know this evening, Veronica gave us all a calendar. I'd like to continue that. I was taken aback a little bit about something being in, on an email that said, like, come to this event, but yet there was no time, there were no date, and I just feel that that's not acceptable.
Yeah, now that we're back in the chambers, we're going to do the calendar.
So, I want, I don't know about my colleagues, but I personally need to know when an event is, I think, and what time and what date. I feel I want to be there. If I can make it, I want to be there. And this thing about an event that took place where they honored someone, and it was just the mayor and her representative, not acceptable, not acceptable. And I called the school to find out if that were true, and they said it wasn't. So I don't know what to think, but-
I'll get back to you on that. That was more of a personal issue with the family, but I'll get back to you.
Well, you know what? The person they were honoring knew nothing about it because it was a surprise for that person, and I think if you exclude people and say, oh, you can go and you can go, but you can't go and you can't go, that's not this city.
Right.
That's not what it's all about, and I was taken aback by that. Thank you. I want, I want answers to it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll get into executive session. Going to enter into executive session to discuss matters of litigation. Contract negotiations regarding 75 I Can Drive, public discussion of which may have a detrimental effect on the city's position. So, we need a vote to go into executive-
Yeah, and to adjourn from that session.
And to adjourn from the session. So, roll call.
Do the motion.
I make, I make a motion.
No, you didn't. Motion, Chow.
I make a motion.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Go into-
So, right, motion by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Chow. Roll call. And we're just going to stay in the chambers here and close the door. Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Nine yeas.